And welcome, thanks for coming out. We really appreciate you being here. As you know, this is something that council is very intent on making happen on a regular basis where we can just come up and sit in front of you and answer your questions, no matter what they are. Don't hesitate. Our clerk is going to moderate tonight, Nicole, and she'll go through some of the housekeeping rules about tonight and how you can ask your questions and so on. But I just wanted to say welcome and great to see such a good turnout and introduce the front panel here. So beside me I have our CAO, Andrew McNeil, and our deputy CAO, Mr. Jerry Marshall. We have our general managers. We have Danny Rogers. And Kevin Lalande on the end there. And in this corner, we've got our fire chief, Fire Chief Williams. We've got our chief financial officer, Jocelyn. And our clerk, Nicole. Happy to see that all members of council are here as well, and we've got a lot of other staff here in the room too. So when you ask your question, we're going to do our best to answer it, and you'll see us passing the mic around and kind of passing questions off to department heads and general managers to make sure you get the most accurate answer you can. I'll just start off by saying that don't hesitate to ask any question. We're a complete open book, and you might not like the answer, but it's going to be the truth, I promise you that. So we'll get started now, and I'll turn it over to Nicole. Nicole?
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, on this gorgeous, gorgeous night. A few housekeeping items for this evening. The spaces for open dialogue and idea sharing, and of course, all your questions. We ask that you be respectful of each other, council, and administration. If you'd like to ask a question, please feel free to come to one of the mics located in the aisleways. We ask that you ask one question to allow everybody a chance, but please feel free to get back in the line if you have additional questions for council and administration. This evening's meeting is being recorded, and will be posted on the town's YouTube channel tomorrow at some point. And if you have any additional questions following tonight, please follow up with staff at Town Hall, and we're happy to assist you with any inquiries that you do have. And without further ado, we can begin our meeting, so please feel free to come to the mic. We have a brave soul.
Well, that was great. Thanks for coming, everybody. Good afternoon, sir.
Well, a fairly quick question. We were talking about getting rid of the business licenses, and I'm just curious as to how far we've gone on that plan. And that's my question, so I'll sit down.
Thank you for the question. We did commit to doing, we did some roundtables on business licensing with our business community. I'm not so sure that we ever made the commitment that we were going to get rid of business licensing. I'm not sure that that is something that we want to do. You know, having a business license allows us to deal with issues in the business community when they arise, and we had hoped by now to have a brand-new business license bylaw. We don't, but what we have done is drastically change our approach to the administration of the bylaws. So, you know, we heard very clearly that the community wanted to feel, our business community in particular, wanted to feel more supported and less regulated. So within the confines of the existing bylaw, we just simply switched our focus and tried to go to much more friendly administration and making the business community feel supported through our efforts rather than overly regulated.
Thank you.
All right. First off, I'd like to congratulate whoever's responsible for getting the buses in and out of some of the seniors' facilities like Park Place and those areas around there. My question is about, I don't know how much fact is to it, but I've heard rumors that the town council is wanting to build a new town hall, and I want to know why it's required, how much would it cost, would it still be centrally located as where it is now? And the answers to some of these questions, is there something else that we could be more realistically that we would use this money for, like food bank or housing or that sort of thing? Thank you.
Hello? Okay. I'll start this one off. Let me be very clear. Council has not committed to building a new town hall. All they have simply done, I brought forward a recommendation in collaboration with our chief financial officer. The town unfortunately is in a position that we need to spend multiple millions of dollars on the current town hall. The reason for that, town hall is approximately 93 years old. It is a former schoolhouse that has had a series of renovations applied to it. There are seven furnaces in town hall. It is very inefficient in terms of energy, et cetera. It also is not AODA compliant, meaning it's not accessible compliant. It needs renovations to bathrooms, elevators, et cetera. So the recommendation to council was, before we spend approximately $5 million over the next couple of years, would you like us to step back and explore options? One option could be reaching out to the private sector and see if anybody is interested in working with the municipality. And what we have asked for is anyone willing to build a building at no capital dollar cost to the municipality, no cost to the taxpayer, and explore what a business case would look like for the town to enter into a lease, long-term lease, lease to own, et cetera. So we have simply put out a request for expression of interest. It closes tomorrow, actually, so we'll know by tomorrow if anyone was interested in working with us. We specifically asked for people that have land on Main Street because we think it's very important that our town hall remains in close proximity to Main Street, which is the core of our community. And I think those are the key reasons. So it's really trying to be financially prudent, fiscally responsible, and simply look at options. This doesn't cost anything to explore, and then we will report back to council with ultimately a business case. If it makes sense, we'll explore it further. If it doesn't, we won't.
What options have been...
Get it to the top of the list for the old library and for the old arena.
Thank you for your question. So the old library currently is being very gently renovated, and that will become office space for town staff. Currently, the building we're in, another reason that we're looking to at the possibilities and the options for another building is we've grossly outgrown the building we're in. We have virtually staff that are working out of closets in some cases. So we're going to move a bunch of staff over there. We've also got some structural issues at town hall, and our chief building official, Danny Rogers, can speak to that with respect to the second level of town hall. When it's a busy day and people up there, up there working, and you're sitting below them, you have to wonder if they're going to sit on your lap any minute sometimes. So there are some structural issues there as well, and so we're going to be moving some town staff over there and some departments over there in the interim. And then once we decide on town hall renovations or whatever that decision is, then we'll determine what will happen with the library. With the, with respect to the old arena, currently the old arena has been shuttered. We're waiting on a study to come back and let us know what is best and what the cost will be with respect to repurposing that arena. And we're also looking at some other options for housing, and I'll let the CAO speak to that.
Yes, so we're currently engaged in a business case preparation for the old Stars Arena. One of the things that I think it's important that everyone understand, as a hockey rink, the ice surface was on sand, so there's actually no concrete floor in that old building. So when we moved hockey over to the new arena, in order for us to repurpose the old arena, we actually need to spend significant dollars to put in a floor and actually make it usable for other recreational activities. So that, we're going to be looking at the potential for pickleball, basketball, indoor soccer, et cetera. We'll look at the business case, the kind of revenue that would be generated, the operating cost. We know what it costs to operate the building because we've been operating it for decades. Our assumption is that it will lose money because it was losing money as a hockey arena. The only question is how much would it lose, and is that something that the municipality can afford? But we will give it an objective review. We will prepare the business case for repurposing it for recreational uses. We will also look at the potential for affordable housing, workforce housing, attainable housing. There was actually previously a presentation done a couple of months ago by a private sector developer who was interested in putting forward a proposal. So we're going to look at all options and bring those forward to council, likely end of June, early July is when we'll have some recommendations before council. Yes?
Hi, my name's Jamie Armstrong. I am a business owner and resident in town, and I'm a psychotherapist. In the last year, my commercial rent has been increased by 25%, which makes it really hard to continue a business when that happens. So when the new arena and library was built, I was so excited because as a psychotherapist, it became a great option to provide a rental space for groups and workshops. I was recently informed that for a for-profit business, we are not allowed to rent those rooms because I'm not providing a service to the community. I would argue that support groups for women who have been abused in other workshops about mental health would be a community support. What's happening is I'm having to move things out to Collingwood, which is taking services away from our community. So I'd love some clarification on the policy about the room rentals at the new arena and
Kevin's deferring to me, so I will start. We understand and sympathize with your situation, and you're not the only one that has come forward asking permission to run a business out of a public facility. It's a careful balancing act that we try to strike because we have to be careful not to advantage one business over another. That's called bonusing, and that's not permitted under the Planning Act. So there's a fine line between supporting community events and wellness, training, et cetera, but then when it becomes a for-profit business, that's when it gets into a situation where we have to be very careful. We're happy to sit down with you and look at your situation and understand it a little more clearly if we haven't treated you fairly, but there have been other situations where we've had to say, no, sorry, it's just not fair for the municipality to be subsidizing for-profit businesses. So that may not be the answer you're looking for, but that's why we take that approach.
And the other thing I think is important, and I want to be clear on behalf of council, is the last thing we want is for any of our local businesses to be leaving town to do business. And so as Andrew's indicated, please give us a call. Come on in and sit down, and we'll see what we can do and where we can do it, and if we can't, we'll let you know. But we'll, and also Caitlin Mosma, who is our economic development officer, she also may be able to help you find something else that's more suitable and more affordable within town.
Thank you. Great question. So the other opportunity strikes, crosses my mind, is the new medical clinic. So maybe I'll circle back after the meeting. So we do have a clinic. I'm not sure what your model looks like, but we do do health services out of there, mental health, diabetes, a few other, smoking sensation. You know, we've got nurse practitioners, so maybe there's a fit there as well. So we'll have a conversation and see if there's a solution to your situation.
Don't let us off easy. This is your opportunity.
Good evening. Andy May, I'm a resident here. First of all, I want to start by saying congrats to Mayor Smith, all members of council, and especially our CAO and the McNeefson team that you have put together here at the town. It's great to see us as a town moving forward, especially with the announcement of our new high school. My question is for Mayor Smith. He worship, there was a recent post on Facebook in relation to the property beside our high school where it's going, and the post verbatim is, "If it's going into the property beside the arena, is it true that the mayor's wife owns that property?" Now, this is from a disgruntled ex-group, but can you clarify this, please?
I have to remember to breathe and be nice, right? You know, folks, it never ceases to amaze me, and I'm sure other members of council and staff, at what lengths some people and groups will go to to spread rumors that just aren't true. I will start by saying absolutely un- un- unequivocally, my wife, myself, or any member of my family, or any of my personal friends for that matter, own any land anywhere around or close to the arena. Myself and my wife do own properties in Wasaga Beach. None of them are commercial. They are residential properties, and none of them are close to that area. So that is absolute fabrication. I'm not surprised to hear this, and you know, I just hope that people who talk like this would find a better tactic. But at the end of the day, the answer is absolutely not. There's a reason, folks, I don't own any commercial land in Wasaga Beach, and it's because if I did, I would, I believe I would have a conflict of interest as your mayor. And there was a time before I became mayor in my first term of council where I did purchase a commercial piece of property. I'm going to clear this up now. And it was right on the corner of Main Street where it used to be called the joke shop and it burnt down. So if you look at the blue building as you come over the bridge now where our big sign is, it was right in front of that. And I purchased that property for $285,000 from the owner, and I did that for a reason. And this was before I was on council. This was when Mayor Cal Patterson's council was attempting to amass some lands in order to move things forward. And I purchased that land because the owner of that land, Ms. Karen Salvatore, swore that she would never, ever sell that property to the town of Wasaga Beach. So I, with my realtor, went and made an offer and purchased that property. And then I went to the town of Wasaga Beach and met with the CAO at the time and said, "I've purchased this property that you are never going to be able to purchase, and now I'm prepared to sell it to you." Now, the rumor was out there was that I sold it and made a lot of money. I sold it to the town for $285,000 plus $2,500 approximately in legal fees, exactly why I bought it for. I did that because the town, I believe, needed and should have that property, and they purchased it. I've never had any other commercial holdings within the town of Wasaga Beach in the last 25 years, and I don't plan to have any commercial holdings in future, nor do I plan to buy any land or own any land that I plan to sell to the town of Wasaga Beach.
Hello. I was talking to a survey recently, the land just down by the casino. And my understanding is, talking to that survey company, they told me they're surveying it for Costco. And I'd just be interested to know, where is it going to go? Like, my understanding is that, you know, the old Zancor House, the sales office, that it's going to go in that area. Am I right?
No application has been filed yet for a Costco. So as soon as we know, and as soon as, as soon or as if a Costco application is filed, we will share that with the community.
Hi, Peter Gribben. First of all, thank you for bringing public engagement back to our town. We missed it for quite a few years there, so it's great to have this kind of Q and A session. What's on most of our minds is obviously the redevelopment of the beachfront and also, you know, the hub. And there's also talk about a hotel coming into town. So without giving away any, any information, because I know there's a meeting on June 20th on the beachfront, what can you tell us tonight?
Thank you very much, Peter. So what we can tell you is that, as you know, the town selected the Fram-Sloker Group to be the master developer for the beachfront. We have been working with Fram for quite some time, and we've heard from many people what's taking so long. And I can tell you, folks, there's a lot of red tape and work when you're working on a development this size in order to bring it to fruition and to bring it to the public and let you know exactly what's happening. So yes, on June 20th, Fram will be here, be here in this room, I believe, and prepared to show you some sketches and some drawings, and we'll be here to let you know what it is that the plan is and how we plan to move it forward. But I can say that we are very close. If I have my way and council has their way, we will see a sales office hopefully open in Wasaga Beach this summer. And we'll also be pushing very hard to see shovels in the ground for next summer for the redevelopment of Wasaga Beach. I'm not going to get into any detail. I'll pass it over to Andrew in a minute to elaborate a little more, but I'll also tell you that we are in talks with a very high-quality hotel developer, one of the biggest, first or second biggest in the country, number one, the Sunray Group. And we are very confident at this point that we will see a deal come together there to place a hotel here in Wasaga Beach as well. So I'll turn it over to Andrew to elaborate a little more. We won't get into it too in-depth tonight because there's still some things to be done within the agreement before Fram comes on the 20th, but we'll give you what we can. Andrew?
Yeah, I would simply add, the last meeting we had back in the winter, we reaffirmed the principles, and we heard from the community loud and clear that you wanted to see mixed use. That's what you will see in June. Some of the uses that you told us you wanted to see, that's what you will see in June. We are looking at a hotel. There will be public square, there will be retail, there will be shops, there will be restaurants, there will be residential. So we think we're coming forward with a responsible plan that respects the vision that you all told us you wanted to see. The reason it's taking us a bit longer than we expected is both Fram and Sunray are doing their due diligence, their modeling. They don't want to present something that they're not comfortable that they could build. So we've been running a lot of numbers, they've been doing all their due diligence in the background, and we've got to a place where we think we're in a good spot. So we're looking forward to June 20th, sharing it with you. I'm quite excited to share where we've got to, and we've got a great partnership going. So that's about all we can share for now, but more is coming, and we hope, we hope you'll like what you will see.
Absolutely.
In terms of the, the technical requirements, as, as most of you are aware, we are revisiting the cross-section for Beach Drive to reintroduce vehicular traffic. And so there is some planning changes that we are pursuing right now, and in fact, we will be having a public meeting just to inform the public in terms of the progress of Beach Drive proper and the road configuration and some of the initial streetscaping design considerations. So for those of you who are available, and it will be, I think it's been posted already, but it's definitely online, and we'll, we'll make another announcement. But May 30th, we do also have another public meeting for the road and the infrastructure component as, as we move forward. So following the conclusion of that, we'll get into the detailed design for the balance of the road network and streetscaping and roundabouts and that type of stuff. So there is one technical meeting at the end of May.
Thank you, Kevin. Next question?
Yes, it goes back to the streetscaping. I live in the West End, and it's a fairly new subdivision, and you know, when I drive around the roundabout and I approach Wasaga Beach, it's so depressing. What are you guys doing about making it enticing or making it more nice for people to see when they drive into Wasaga Beach, specifically around the roundabout? Like, it's sad.
So that's a great question, and I'll turn it over to other members here to speak to in a minute. But what I can tell you is that coming back in the next 30 to 60 days from our bylaw department is a lot of new and rewritten bylaws that are going to give us better ways to deal with property standards in Wasaga Beach. Ladies and gentlemen, I was born and raised here, and I can tell you that we've always had lots of old cottages, we've always had properties that weren't maintained, but I can tell you today, as your mayor, that as I drive through this town, it's getting out of hand. And there is just way too many properties where people aren't maintaining their property. You've got beautiful homes on one side, and when I say beautiful homes, I don't mean big fancy expensive homes. I mean just homes that are maintained and grass that is cut, and you know, it's not got three trailers in the yard and a, and an old decrepit boat that hasn't run in years and a couple of cars. And you know, council recognizes how important it is to beautify our community, and so we're taking the steps, and we've been working on steps in order to change bylaws and redevelop the bylaw situation, as well as a beautification plan that Andrew can chat to in a minute to help us improve that. At the end of the day, we've got the longest freshwater beach in the world. We've got the most beautiful community. I often say this, we live in the best community in the best province in the best country in the world. This council and our citizens have a responsibility to start working on cleaning it up. And there's going to be a lot of people not happy because they're going to get a knock on the door and say enough is enough. But at some point, someone's got to take the lawnmower by the handles and get the job done, and I'm absolutely confident that this council is intent on doing that.
So above and beyond property standards and enforcement, there's a general appreciation for urban design, and I think if you ask all the staff up here, they will probably tell you that I drive them crazy because I'm, yeah, council too. I'm an urban designer by training, I'm a licensed landscape architect. Beauty matters to me, it's important to me. I care what this town looks like because it matters to all of you and it matters to our tourism industry. So I've been working hard with staff to raise the bar, and almost daily, I'm driving, where's Trevor, our director of planning? I'm driving him nuts. Have you seen this? Why are you doing this? Why can't we do this? No, you should be doing this. So that's part of what goes on. We need to start questioning and raise the bar. Everything we build, we should demand excellence, from buildings to streetscapes to streets themselves, et cetera. So that, again, we can't snap our fingers and magically change what's out there today, but we are taking a different approach. Excellence matters in design. Our streetscape improvements are going to make a difference. We're currently focusing along River Road. Moseley, the entrance to the west, will be an area focused in the not-too-distant future. Beachfront is our priority right now. What Kevin mentioned about Beach Drive, the design for Beach Drive is beautiful, and it will be the most beautiful street in this community. So that will be the start of things to come that we think are quite positive, and we'll set the tone for what we're going to demand from the private sector to deliver as well.
And we have a participant over here, and then we'll go over to my left. Oh, excuse me, Kevin.
Yeah, if I may, again, back to Moseley Street. So we are probably 60% through the detailed design for the urbanization of Moseley Street from 45th to Beechwood Road. So that's, that includes storm sewer, curb and gutter, bike lane, sidewalk, improved streetscaping. So that has initiated. We're just going through some of the utility conflicts and what we're trying to position ourselves, certainly to be prepared for, you know, construction-ready for, for future funding opportunities, but that design is underway currently.
The question, I'm Jen Diamond, resident. The question I have is really about accessibility, and the, I challenge you on making Wasaga function to the best of its ability because accessibility is horrible. There's lots of issues that I run into on every trip when I go around town, and a lot of it is quite astronomical because I have to go into a lively lane of traffic and things like that to kind of be able to get, to get places. So the question I have is the timeline. I'm in the West End, so to get here, which I came in the chair tonight, I have to go along Shore Lane because there's no sidewalk, right? Anywhere for to get from my end of town into here, so how long before that's possible? Because the road, although people sometimes see me, they don't always, and it's, it's, it's quite a scary reality. And then the other part to that is what's the process? The most effective... The most effective process when I run into the significant issues that exist?
Certainly, thank you for your comments. With respect to the timelines for Mosley Street, once we finalize the design, there's a number of competing priorities, and there's only so much money. And so I can't give you a definitive answer if it's going to be within the next 10 years because we, as we've alluded to, there is significant investments currently underway in terms of River Road West from Veterans Way to Blueberry Trails, which was $20 million. And we have significant investments to make in the beachfront as well. So as the treasurer will attest, there's only so much money. So Mosley Street is certainly a priority from a transportation, accessibility, and vehicular traffic perspective, in my opinion. But there are other competing priorities, so there is, ideally, within the next 10 years. But again, those priorities may change as we move forward.
I would add, we need to do better, we have to do better, and we plan on doing better. It's just a matter, again, I wish we had a magic wand and we could fix everything. But a question for you, have you used On Demand and does that help or On Demand transit?
No, I mean, I like to get out and around, and this is like my walking, so, I mean, it's going for a walk fundamentally when I'm in the chair. So it is just around the walking accessibility. And for the most part, with the bike trail, the town's awesome, right? Like, I can make it in the scooter, I can make it all the way to Beach One. But I can't do simple things like go to the match for dinner and walk because you can't get to the casino. Like, it's absolutely impossible to get there. And that one drives me batty because it's a great restaurant, and I live literally across the street. So it's like, okay, can I go have a drink? No, I can't, right?
That is on our radar. Kevin, I don't know, do you want to update on the status of that sidewalk? That's a thorn in our side, too.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it certainly is a frustration for all of us, not only right now, but even through the winter, most certainly. There is a responsibility on the developer to extend a sidewalk from the roundabout across the channel and then along the frontage to tie in with the existing sidewalks. So there is a pedestrian crossing and some improvements that we've been waiting a couple of years now for them to implement. And not only that, they also are required to improve and construct a new access from Lyons Court. And so that access will help facilitate the looping of our transit system. Right now, it's, our transit system doesn't have a lot of additional time to follow Mosley Street extension around the far roundabout and then come into the casino proper at the moment. But once that new entrance is constructed from Lyons Court, Route 1 at the end of Ramblewood will be able to come in, scoot in from the southeast end, and then get right back out and onto its route. So those two designs are currently, they were recently submitted to the MTO. Just for your awareness, the town does not have jurisdiction or ownership over Lyons Court, Beechwood Road, or the two roundabouts. That is still provincial jurisdiction. So they are the approval authority for these measures, but they're just as anxious as we are to get the developer mobilized to get that work underway. They have committed, and I use that term loosely because they've committed before, to advance that this summer, and we're hopeful that that does happen because we do want to see those measures in place, certainly before the winter, so we can get transit out there and get the sidewalks at least passable for those folks that are currently walking along the side of the provincial highway there.
The other comment I would make, if there are other things, please feel free to reach out to myself and Kevin. You probably notice things more than we may, and let us know if there are some other low-hanging fruit that we can do to help. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Larry Armstrong. Yeah, it kind of took away my question because it was about the casino and the transit because there's little rumblings in there where the employees can't even get to work. You know, they give money to the town and we can't even help them out. That was going to be my first question. But my second question is going through, I live in the Silver Birch area, and going through the Silver Birch trails is just a mess, just a mess. Like, all the trees, a lot of them were already cut down, and the logs are there and everything. I understand, like, at this time of the year, the habitat and everything, but there's, it has to be cleaned up somehow. It's just disgusting. That was just my other question.
Thank you for your feedback. In terms of that trail through Silver Birch, it is an open space block, and with our levels of service and resources currently, that is the extent of the level of service we perform within these open space blocks. So I can appreciate it's unsightly, but we do not enter into any of the open space blocks to tidy them up, unfortunately, just given the resources and the other priorities that we do have. But if there is something...
A little bit at a time, little bits?
If there is something specific, don't hesitate to call the office, but it's not a practice. Thanks.
My name's Gordon Montgomery. Carrie, my wife, who wasn't my wife when we moved here, we moved up here about three years ago. And one of the things that I really loved about the area is the green space, which I believe the provincial company, or provincial, excuse me, I just got out of the hospital, so I'm a little bit fuzzy here. Provincial government was part of their mandate to have more green in cities and things. So we live out near the superstore, actually pretty much just across the street here. And one of the reasons why we wanted to buy here is because of all the trees along Mosley. You come in, you have houses, you have trees, then you have some more houses in industry, then you have some more trees. I heard, or I read last fall, I believe it was, in one of the newspapers, that the town wanted to make a deal with the province to exchange some lands. And some of the lands that were mentioned in that were the, from my understanding, were the tree, is the tree area from 45th down to about 42nd Street, and wanting to put some form of housing or apartment buildings, low-income possibly, I can't remember the exact article. So my question to you would be, what does the town have planned for these lands, if any? And if they do have plans, what would the timeline of this development take to get started?
Thanks very much, Gordon, and I hope you're feeling better. So I'll get started and I'll then turn it over to Andrew. But the municipality currently doesn't own any of those lands. Those lands that you're talking about are owned by the MECP, as well as many of the lands, for example, along Shore Lane. If you drive along Shore Lane, you'll see a cottage and a house, and then you'll see a vacant lot or two right on the water. And on the other side, there's blocks sometimes of just green space where there's no homes. And the reason that occurred was back in the early 70s, the late 60s, the then Lands and Forests, when they came to Wasaga Beach and decided they would make it a provincial park, they started to expropriate lands, predominantly on the beachfront and along Shore Lane. And at that time, one of the business owners here, who was Reeve at one time as well, Eugene Longevan, and a rape pairs group challenged them on these expropriations. And the court made a decision that what they were doing was illegal. They couldn't be expropriating people's private properties like this. So the court stopped that expropriation. What they didn't do is go far enough to make, at that time, the province give back what they had already taken, or replace anything they may have already tore down, cottages or whatever. And so that's why you have these vacant parcels now. Those were taxed at a residential vacant lot rate for many years, and back in about 2013, don't hold me exactly to these dates, the province at that time then, Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, decided that they could save a lot of money by pulling all of those properties along Shore Lane into the provincial park. Why? Because the provincial park pays very little tax. And so the municipality lost those tax dollars even though they were vacant property. So when we're talking about exchanging lands or talking to the ministry, we're talking about lands that they are never going to use, lands that are very valuable to the town of Wasaga Beach from a tax standpoint, that should be developed because everything around them is developed. They're along a, they're infill lots, basically. And that is, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in tax revenue for the municipality once homes are built there. So that's what we're looking to do and work with the province to try and negotiate and do. And we'll give them lands that we own, for example, that could be part of the provincial park that are adjacent to some of their large areas and tracts of land out by the sports park in that area, and try to make those trades. Don't know how well that's going to go. It's not at the top of the list today. We are talking about it and we'll be dealing with it. With respect to the lands on Mosley Street, I don't believe the town owns that land. And so therefore, unless a developer is to come forward on those lands and make an application, we would deal with it at that time. But I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Yeah, the only thing I would add, the province owns about 25% of the geographic land area of Wasaga Beach, and they pay very little tax on a quarter of our community. That impacts all of you because they're not paying their fair share. I'll share a personal story, many of you have heard this before. My family was one of those families that was expropriated back in the early 70s. You may know the park area at 13th Street that has sat vacant for 50 years. That's where my family had a business. We were expropriated and told the province was going to build a Holiday Inn. 50 years later, there's no Holiday Inn, and the land is still sitting there. That is prime development land. I don't consider that prime parkland. It's land that formerly had houses on it. It's worth a lot of money that they're paying no tax on, and there's a higher and better use. So I think what we're trying to say to the province is, we've had 50 years experimenting with this, let's work together and see, not all of your land, but there may be some pieces of land that there could be a higher and better use for. And some of the park areas, if you go out at Beach Area 1 on the Point, it's very rundown. It has not had any money paid to maintain it in 50 years. That's our prime tourist area. So I think what we're saying is, we want to see more investment, we want to see higher and better use. There are areas that should remain parkland, we agree with that, but let's, we want to work in collaboration with the province and the community to reimagine some of the lands that they took 50 years ago and see if we can do better and improve the look and economic base of our community.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having this meeting and welcoming us all. My name is Judy Dunbar. I've lived here for 10 years, happy years, and I'm glad to see things moving forward with the community. I'm going to push back, nudge a little bit about living in the West, I'm sorry, living in the West End as I do. I want to ask a little further about the, where the Zancor sales office went down, the properties. Okay, we know there's not going to be a hospital there, there's not going to be a Costco there. I've heard that in talking with the town before, that the property on the south side at the corner of Ramblewood and Lyons Court, that there's a narrow swath of that over to, I believe it's Nada Wasaga Mechanical, that might have a strip mall or some kind of small shops in there. This was apparently on the agenda at one time, maybe it's not, and I wonder if you can tell what is actually going to happen down in all of that property. And hopefully, there might be some building for seniors that are just one-story bungalows, no stairs.
So the core area that you just described was the town's business park. So those were the lands that, right before the election, the previous council turned over to Zancor. Those lands since the late 90s were always intended to be employment uses and that would permit business activities, light manufacturing, et cetera. So that still remains the objective for those lands. Zancor is currently pursuing something that we hope to be able to share with you in the not-too-distant future. They are leveling the property right now, and we are just waiting for an application to be made, and then we look forward to disclosing.
Thank you very much.
I don't know whether anybody can answer this question or not. How much influence does an Anoasaga Valley Conservation Authority have on these developments that are being discussed here tonight?
Kevin, do you want to take that one?
Thank you for your question. It's really dependent on whether or not those lands fall within the regulatory boundary of the Anoasaga Valley Conservation Authority. So if they fall within the boundary, then they may be subject to permitting and approvals from the NVCA. The lands that we are talking about today, I don't believe the business park in its entirety falls within the regulatory limits. That's kind of a guess, but I don't believe so. And what was the other development lands we were talking about? Anyways, I guess the short answer is, if they fall within the regulatory boundary, then they will require permit and approvals, and there's a process for that, just as we are subject to that as well. And it can be a lengthy process, as many of you may know, but it's a process that's in place currently.
Feel free to hit us with some harder questions here, too, right?
Not hard at all, very simple. First of all, I'd like to thank the community of Wasaga Beach. We lost our dog while we went on vacation, my girlfriend, first time in 15 years, me, first time in 10 years. And this community, while we were away in Mexico, rose up to help us try to find our dog. I'm sorry to say we never found it, but I can't tell you how important a feeling that is. And since we've come to Wasaga Beach, it's one of the reasons why we love living here. It's important that we make progress, and I understand sometimes we've looked at each other a few times, and the patience level of some of us might not be up to standard. But I got to say, I hope I'm around when things change. And the most important thing I can say right now before I step away from the mic, we've got a legion, you guys should, legions.ca, you need to join. All right? We're the, it's the first time a legion has been started since 1970. There are legions that are leaving, and we're hoping, I looked, we wanted to do this, and for me, the big reason to do it is that I want Wasaga Beach to be independent. When I say independent, I mean where I can live, stay, enjoy myself, and not have to drive to some other town. I love Calling Wood, I love Barry, I love all these towns, they're great. But I'd like, I'd like for me and for the rest of us to be able to be here, and anything you can do to make that happen, I appreciate it. So thank you, and thank you to the community for reaching out.
Thank you, Frank. Oh, sorry, Kim, I didn't see there. Thank you, Frank. And it is important, again, I think, to mention branch number, Royal Canadian Legion Branch Number 645. And it is the first legion that has opened in the last 40 years, and it is going to be here in Wasaga Beach. Council chatted about it this afternoon and what we're going to do. We're going to do everything in our power to help them get it up and running. And I think it's just absolutely wonderful that the amount of veterans we have in this community who served our country, and the amount of full-time residents who are currently serving in our military, and full-time residents who have served in the past is a huge amount. And we know that we owe our veterans everything we have today. And so this council and staff here are going to do everything we can to help that legion to grow and prosper. So thank you for bringing that up, Frank. And again, folks, they are looking for memberships. You do not have to be a member of the military, and you do not any longer have to be a veteran. But a great organization, so we encourage everyone to go on their website, Royal Canadian Legion Branch Number 645 Wasaga Beach, and sign up to be a member and... to be a member. And let's be proud to have our own legion and support our service members and our veterans. Kim?
This is just kind of a personal question. We have a special needs son who our caregiver takes down to the swing that is down at Town Hall. I have videos. He absolutely loves it. It's the only one. Is there any way we can get another one or two, maybe, in the beach somewhere? Because we're down at this end of the beach, so she's having to drive down. And the other thing, too, is a lot of times, there's non-disabled children playing in the swings. If there could be a sign posted saying, like, feel free, but if you see someone come along, because not all parents are thoughtful. Most of them are very helpful when Carrie's down there and they help her get them in the swing and stuff. But I'm just wondering, like, can we, like, up here or somewhere?
Yeah, great question. And Kevin's going to get tired of me keeping punting questions to him. But I will share with you that that's my kid's favorite park as well. And it's not just because I work next door, but it is actually a really good park.
It is lovely.
Kevin, can you share if we have any other accessible playgrounds that are in the works?
Well, just the swing really is all. He can do, he's in a wheelchair, so he's very limited as to the fun he can have.
I think if you do reach out to the office and give me a call, we can take a look in terms of what opportunities might exist in current parks. But in terms of new parks in the area, and we'll say kind of in the West End, we are currently tendering for the new park at the Ramblewood Park Block. So right off of Chiara, between 58th and 45th Street on the north side of Ramblewood, there will be a new park construction underway, hopefully by the fall, with multi-use court, a couple of pickleball courts, and playground infrastructure which is accessible. I can't remember offhand if that specific swing is currently designed, but we can take a look at that. We also have the replacement of the existing park amenities at the William Arnold Park as well. So that, you should see some replacement and upgrades underway, I think in July. July, August is when that new park is going to be replaced. So council's made significant investments over the last couple of years in our parks, spaces, and we hope to continue that with fully accessible playground infrastructure.
Perfect, thanks.
Might I make a suggestion to a member of council that if we don't have in the budget, and it's not scheduled in any of the upgrades or the parks coming up in the near future, maybe I could make a suggestion to a member of council that perhaps at our next council meeting, we put a motion forward, if the funds are needed, to take that from concero funding and get those swings installed in some more parks. I think it's a great idea.
Hi, I'm Ken Weaver. My question is more on road safety, specifically the corner of Theme Park Drive and River Road West, right at the arena. Especially when there's events that are going on, and we've had a few, there's been some real close calls there. There's really, no one knows what they're doing at the corner there. The other thing was, when they had the two main events this year, there was parking going down Theme Park Drive all the way down, past Wally Drive, on both sides of the road. You couldn't even get an emergency vehicle through, if there needed to be. There was tow signs, everything like that there, but people were just parking wherever they could. Also, across the road at Wasaga Meadows, they were doing the same thing, and there was no way you could even squeeze a car through there. So I guess it's a two-part question. First part is, are there going to be stoplights or a roundabout or something, and how soon at Theme Park Drive and River Road? And what about event parking?
Great question. Was it Ken? Ken. In terms of the signalization or improvements at Theme Park and River Road West, we do have that slated for, I believe it's 2027. So there is a plan for intersection improvements. In terms of the parking and some of the challenges with parking on both sides, I will certainly consult with the fire department and confirm accessible space, and whether or not bylaw needs to be engaged to revisit, perhaps, if no parking signage. But that is, it's going to be a busy location regardless of whether the signs are there or not. But parking perhaps may, from time to time, extend along the side streets. But it's a good thing, but provided it's safe. So I think we need to certainly take a look at that and see if there is some additional signage that might be required.
You said 2027. Could that be, could something temporarily be done at that corner, though, to prevent fatality?
There's not any plans currently, Ken. So in terms of fatality, there isn't any, I'm not aware of any conflicts or near misses or accidents in that area.
There were near misses. I've seen some.
But in terms of how we assess improvements at intersections through different warrants, we're anticipating to initiate those improvements in 27. So there isn't any intermediate controls that are being considered right now.
And I'd also like to comment on the event parking. February, Burton Cummings Blue Rodeo, that was our first chance to see how the new Twin Pad Arena and Library functioned. We did our best to anticipate, and we actually had all of the parking available down at the beachfront. We had shuttles in place. We had signage. We had staff working. And not a lot of people wanted to park there. They wanted to park close by. So we learned from that. So the next time we have an event, we're going to anticipate a different response and a different type of behavior. So we'll anticipate some of, we learned. So we'll anticipate some of that and respond differently. I think the fire chief also wanted to respond.
Thank you. And I can add a little bit to that. That specific intersection, I'm sure there has been close calls at that intersection, but that I'm aware of, we haven't responded to any serious accidents at the intersection as of yet. Specific to the events, there's significant safety planning that goes into those events, both the onsite event as well as what happens offsite. I was going to mention, part of our plan was to get as many vehicles away from the arena as possible. It didn't go according to plan. We did send the firefighters out during the events to have a look at the roadways, to make sure that we could get through. They were able to navigate all the main artery roads, but I will absolutely agree, some of those interior streets were a challenge. So we attempted to make some changes on night, too. But in part of our debrief to those events was a discussion about improving that. There's certainly signage is an issue, probably bylaw enforcement is an issue, and making sure that if someone does park improperly, we need to be able to remove their vehicle immediately to make sure that those residents are protected. So your comments are noted. Thank you.
So my name is Greg, and my wife and I, Lisa, have celebrated our first year here in Wasaga Beach. We spent some time here as, through our youth, but, you know, we're here permanently now. So with a show of hands or maybe some applause, can everybody acknowledge what this is? Can we get a round of applause for this? Everybody know what this is? So when we moved here last year, we thought it was a really nice gesture from council to offer the residents the opportunity to have one of these orange tags. And this year, it seems to be a much more complicated process, with an online process that requires ownership being downloaded and scanned, other personal information that I think is way beyond the scope of a municipality and can go far deeper. When we drove around town, this seemed to be like our buddy pass, like a hall pass, right? If we had this in our dash or on the window or whatever, we knew who we were. We're here. And this year, going to City Hall, asking for one of these, they said, not possible. You have to go online. You have to redo it and whatever. And so I would say that personally, I'm not going to sign up for it, because I don't need my township to know the ownership of my vehicle or anything else that's far deeper than what this pass provides. Coming back into Wasaga Beach during long weekends, when the police were administering roads, we had this in our dash, and we were just waved through. So it's kind of like a thing, that it's like our little secret. And I was told by staff, when I went down to City Hall, that people were selling them or giving them to other people or whatever. But are you aware of what the terms are on the back of this? Just asking. I'm not sure who to, I don't know who's. So the second term here, because it was told to me that we weren't going to be doing these passes this year, because people were reselling them, or Airbnb, or other people were passing them off to others. But it says parking permits may be lent or transferred. So the very thing that you're asking of the people who have these, you're saying that we're not being honest, that if my daughter comes to town, then in order for her to go down to Main Beach and have free parking, because she stays with us, you know, outside of university, that she has to put her ownership into the system. And I'm sure there's a bunch of people around here who are, with all due respect, less tax savvy than I am. But I'm more concerned about Big Brother kind of stuff, and the fact that the very card that we all carried, I would say everybody in this room has at least two of these, right? That if there's any low-hanging fruit, that by the time June first rolls around, we get another fluorescent card, and we can go down to City Hall, and we can have two of these passes for each one of us.
So ladies and gentlemen, when this council put forth a motion to give our residents free parking, we did that because residents have been asking for that for a long time. The intent was never ever, council's intent was never ever for people to take those passes and sell them, or to use them to give to tourists, or to people who aren't a resident. This is a benefit for you, the tax-paying individuals and/or residents of this community. So I understand the frustration. But a little bit of history behind the paper is not only the fact that it was, and we've learned through this process, that it was abused greatly. Prior to last year, when we purchased parking permits, we would sell about 2,500 permits a year to our residents. Last year, when we made them free, we issued over 14,000 of these permits. And what that did was it backlog our Treasury Department for a good month or more, more, where they just were not able to get the other work that has to get done daily, water bills and taxes and you name it, done. It was very overwhelming. And you know what? We learned from it. And you've probably heard me say this before, we're going to do things, we're going to make changes, and we're going to do great things, and we're going to make mistakes. And I'll tell you again tonight, that this council will make mistakes. And I'm not saying this was a mistake, but it was certainly a learning opportunity. And we knew at that point that we could not do this paper issue anymore and make this happen. So we had staff reach out and do the research, and look at what our neighboring communities, like Collingwood and Barry and other areas, were doing. And we learned from that. And that's how we got to where we are today. So I'm going to turn it over, actually, to our CFO, to explain, you know, what it is we learned and how we got here. And before I do that, I think what's important to note is, when you go online, and if you can't do it online, come into Town Hall, we'll help you do that. We're asking for your ownership, because that ownership's going to show the vehicle tag number, and it's going to show the address. So we know you're a citizen and you're a resident. We don't keep that information. As soon as we have it, and you've issued your pass, it is deleted or discarded. If you come into Town Hall, because you don't want to do that online, we'll be glad to just look at it, see it, verify it, give it back to you. We're not going to copy it. We're not going to keep it on file. But at the end of the day, Jocelyn's going to explain how we got here. There's many communities that do it this way, and it works. It's worked for years for other communities, and it'll work for us. But most importantly, we rely annually a great deal on parking revenue in the town of Wasaga Beach that helps reduce the taxes that you have to pay. And if we are issuing free permits to our residents, which we are happy to do, but for whatever reason and how that's being issued is being abused, and we're losing a great deal of parking revenue because of it, then we're defeating the purpose. We're giving you a bonus on one hand, and if it's being abused on the other hand, your taxes end up going up, or whatever, because we're not collecting the revenues we should be collecting for this. Jocelyn?
Thank you. So yes, many of you may have remembered, last year, if you came into Town Hall, there were lineups for obtaining the parking passes. It was, we tried to do it at many facilities, the library, this facility here, and the Town Hall, and we were all overwhelmed with the number of people that we were serving. After going through that, and in line with some of our goals, we wanted to try and move towards online services, because it allows for self-help and being able to move quickly and get what you need. So we considered between what we found overwhelming to service, along with moving and advancing the technology, that that seemed to be a good avenue to go. We did do the research, as was mentioned, and we did find that we were using a system that was very similar to what other municipalities were using, and that we thought this would be a good opportunity to try that. I would like to just clarify one point. Even if you come to Town Hall, you're still going to end up having to go through the online process, because that's the only way that the registration happens now. So I think this is, again, an opportunity for us to review. We're committed, I believe, for this season, unless something changes. But I think we're pretty far into the season now, and it would be very hard for us to make a change.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. We're going to move on here. I think we've responded to your question. No, we've responded. We're going to move on to this lady, please. Okay, thank you. We've moved on. We've moved on. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Christine Larkin. I want to make a comment about the parking as well, because I am not at all in favor of anything online where you're having to give your ownership, your whatever. To me, this sounds 15-minute city globalist agenda, and Collingwood's on track with that as well. And I don't want to be following Collingwood in doing that. But secondly, it is not convenient for us residents. What if, for example, we have friends that come in from out of town, we're all going to go to the beach, I'm going with them, but we can't all fit in my vehicle? Then what do we have to then? I have to pay now to go and park because I'm going in their vehicle? Okay, that's not right. Second of all, what if I'm in a car accident? I have to get a loaner car. Then I have to go and re-register again? Okay? It's not convenient for us residents. It might be convenient for the monitoring of the parking. It's not convenient for us residents. Those two issued to each household for free were very convenient for us to have, and to move from one car to the other. If we have an accident, we have to have a loaner car. We have friends from out of town. We have to go in their bigger vehicle. Far more convenient. I would like the option to be able to pay for parking for the year as a resident, as we did before. Not daily, but for a season pass.
So, sorry, let me clarify.
Instead of giving my vehicle information.
You do have that option. No, if you're uncomfortable entering your...
We like we had...
Can I please finish and respond to your question? If anyone is uncomfortable using the online system and you don't want to do it, no one's forcing you to. There is the option of buying a yearly pass. It costs $45. Your friends, your family can buy yearly passes?
Do you want to pay for things?
Is that, that's still using the hunk, digital mobile? Yeah?
Yeah, I don't want that. I don't want that.
Okay, well, again, we're not going to force you to do it, but the options are there.
Yeah, the option is use only the digital stuff. You're trying to shove down everybody's throat, and we don't want it. Or we aren't saying that you don't want it.
Or the other option is that when you go to the beach, you pay for Or the other option is that when you go to the beach, you pay for parking.
Yeah, I know. I shouldn't have to as a resident, if everybody else is being allowed to park for free.
You're able to park for free, you just have to register.
If I use your digital system, which I don't want, and I shouldn't have to give all that information.
Then that is a choice that you have to make.
I'm being forced to have to make the choice.
No one's forcing you to do anything.
Yes, I am being forced.
We've, we've...
And up until this year, we didn't, we weren't forced to have to do that. We had the option to use the tickets that we were given, or I...
And because of last year, and the amount of extra work it took to issue that, people who don't, please, people who don't drive, who don't have a vehicle, who are residents, paid extra so you could have that. How is that fair to them? It isn't.
Was it brought to council? Was it an actual, you know, something that residents were able to make some kind of decision on?
No, but residents didn't make the decision on free parking either, council did that. Council decided to give residents free parking. Whether you want to take advantage of that is entirely up to you.
Yeah.
All right? So I think we've answered that question, we're not...
Well, I can tell you that most people here don't want it.
Okay, thank you.
So, sorry, before we move forward, I'm going to remind everyone that we will engage in respectful dialogue with one another. I appreciate the passion in the room, and it's fabulous, but we do have to have a level of respect for one another. Thank you.
Well, you did ask for some harder questions, but I am going to stick in along with the line of parking for a moment. I think everyone in this room has to remember that it was a democratic election of who we had on council for us. And if we don't like what they've done in another two and a half, three years, whatever, there is another election, and we can choose other people. So in saying that, we ask our council to look out in their best interest, and in one of the things they did two years ago was gave us free parking. Everyone loved that. This year, they did something a little different, maybe not everyone loves that. Personally, I'm a very trusting person. My cars are obviously in Wasaga Beach, I live in Wasaga Beach, so you want to see my ownership? Every policeman does when they pull me over, so it really doesn't make much of a difference to me. However, I heard that we're too far into the season and things can't be changed. If I heard correctly, Collingwood's gone back and tried to make a couple extra changes. But one thing that comes to my mind is that we've been talking about inclusion. 9:30 this morning at Town Hall, there's inclusion with the Easter seals, this community is for everyone, and everyone needs help, and we raised a flag. So there is a section that I don't, sure if anyone really thought of yet, is if you have a disability, say you're in a wheelchair, or mentally you can't drive, you end up with a parking pass from the government, accessibility parking pass. And what that does for you is you can take it, and whoever's driving you to the beach uses that pass. And that's been like that for years. So is there not some way that for this disability, we can have a little sticker that goes in the window, or a little sticker they could put on their tag, saying, yes, we've been approved because this person does live in the beach, they may have cars, but they don't drive, so someone's going to drive them there, and they can just have a little sticker on their container?
Yeah, excellent question, and we have actually had multiple people approach the municipality. We have absolutely agreed that any caregiver can get free parking passes. So we have accommodated that already, and again, absolutely 100%.
Well, I don't need a mic. You said any caregiver could get that pass, but what about it's a transient caregiver, it's a different person every week, is that accommodated for as well?
Again, if we, if the situation is brought to our attention, we will work with whatever situation to find a reasonable response. So, again, I, okay, yes.
Hi, I know this is my second question, I probably have many more, but my question is going back to bylaw enforcement. I have had a lot of issues with neighbors. When I call bylaw on Friday after four o'clock, I get absolutely no response. It's forced me to call the police. This went on for an entire year. What's being done about it? Are you hiring more bylaw? Are they going to just say their own call and not show up? Like, there's a real issue there.
Thanks for the question. So in terms of the phone being answered on a Friday afternoon, that's something that I'll, after four o'clock, I'll look into that, and if you come see me before we leave here today, I'll take your number so I can call you. But what we are doing this year is we're reimagining how we administer our bylaws. And just to give you a bit of an idea of how the function that I see bylaws performing in our community, is that they should be a galvanizing force, in that if we word our bylaws in a manner that is simple and easy for people to understand, and they set a clear expectation for the standards that it is that we're trying to have the community adhere to, then, you know, the likelihood of us getting more uptake on those, on the standards that we're trying to promote, I think is better. We're moving this year to a more proactive enforcement of our bylaws. So I'll be bringing a report to council early in June. It's going to contain a rewrite of many of our bylaws that are related to property conditions. We're also going to bring forward enhancements in the car rally bylaw that we wrote last year, and some enhancements in our parking bylaw. So, in addition to all of that, we're going to bring and put before council what's called an AMPS bylaw, and that is an administrative monetary penalty system that will allow us, when we do get to enforcement, that we no longer have to rely on the courts, that it is an administrative monetary penalty, that when the threshold is met for us to be at a point of wanting to or needing to impose a penalty, that we do not have to rely on the court system and be in the queue for a court date down the road. And that process comes with a built-in appeal process as well, so if somebody wants to challenge the penalty that they're given, there's a process for that.
I understand that. I understand that. It's having bylaw come out, like, they're not here, there's no... It's that, and they've turned off my mic.
Okay, so we heard you, after we're done, come on up and see myself and Dani, and we'll see if we can help you.
Yes, I understand what you're saying, but she didn't answer my question.
So I want to be clear, it's my understanding that after hours, we have an answering service for our bylaw department. So the one thing we need to look into tomorrow morning is after four o'clock or 4:30, why is the answering service not taking your call, and at least giving you some kind of response when to expect an officer to show up? We do have a lot more bylaw officers in the summer months, I think we hired 10 or 12 more, and there are longer hours in the summer months, but that's not an excuse, you're absolutely right. So we will absolutely, if you come and see us before we leave and get your contact information, we'll look into why the answering service isn't working, and why you're not getting a response, and I apologize for that.
Well, the answering service is working, but they're not sending anybody yet.
Oh, so you are getting an answer. Oh, sorry, I understood that you weren't, but you're not seeing anybody, and you don't see them the next day either, or the day after, or a week later, or a month later. I want to be clear. All right, we'll get to the bottom of that, thank you.
Okay, my question is to that gentleman sitting to your left. You, yeah. I just want to clarify something, I don't know whether I heard you right or not. Someone with a disability parking permit is allowed to use that like that card that that gentleman was waving around. Yes?
No. No, what my answer meant, if there is someone that is unable to drive, and if they have a caregiver, and we have had multiple people contact us and say, can our caregiver, they don't live in Wasaga Beach, can they get a free parking pass? We have said absolutely yes. I hope that answers your question.
So that's the same thing I said?
No.
A little different.
All right. I'm going to hire Mr. Mayor to, and he doesn't live in Wasaga. How much you pay him?
We will absolutely give the mayor a free parking pass.
So he's going to come, and he's going to bring me with my disability permit, because he's now my caregiver, and we're going to the beach. And I need that tag, or I have to get the one that I've got to apply for, where about now? I'm going to say that probably 30% of the Wasaga Beach population is over 50. And some of us that are over 70 are pretty much illiterate with reference to computers, right? So how are we supposed to get this thing from the town?
So we can help you. Come on in to Town Hall, talk to any staff member, and we will assist you. Okay?
Sorry, we're going to allow, sir, sir, sorry, I'm going to just ask that you be respectful, and allow the lady to the left here to speak, and then you can come back up. Thank you, sir.
Hi, I've been trying to get any, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I just... Can you make sure that these microphones are working, please?
I've been trying to get an answer for this question for about eight years now, and I'm sure most of council can attest to the fact that I've spoke to them all about it. I want to know what we have to do to get a crosswalk in front of St. Noel's School.
What I can share is engineering staff are currently reviewing the notice of motion brought forward by Counselor Timms, and a staff report will be coming forward relative to crossing guards, safe schools, student crossings, and pedestrian access through that corridor. Right now, I think it's in queue for June, of which, there's different criteria for crossing guards, and certainly there's resources needed to implement such a program, but that will be council's discretion once that report comes forward, and will most likely be a budget discussion for next year, should they choose to advance that.
I'm just wondering if that will include, like, onsite, like, will people actually go to the sites of the schools to make these decisions, and like, see the cluster of cars and students and...
We're certainly well aware of the parents who drive their kids to school in every elementary school in probably the country.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with the kids that walk.
Yeah, so there has been extensive infrastructure upgrades in that area, certainly to get the sidewalks down 58th Street across Ramble Wood, and then the certain, the recent improvements from 45th Street to make that connection. So the walking, or the walkability of that neighborhood has increased considerably in the last five years. But we are aware of the parking conflicts and the challenges with the lack of kiss-and-ride type protected facilities that the school board unfortunately just do not consider in the design of their sites. But again, in terms of what our next steps are, that will be included in the report that will be going to council hopefully in June.
Thank you. Ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, Jen, again, the question I have is in reference to the casinos, specifically in the funds that Wasaga's now getting from it. And I need to kind of put my context into it, like, my perception first. Of coming to Wasaga, I had lived in Innisville for 20 years, so we had the casino there, and I had lived in Innisville when the township got the casino, and then came about the plans to do, what to do with the funds from it. So my understanding is that the funds are currently being utilized for a medical clinic, as well as this new entertainment corporation. But what are the, where can I find the specific rules that the council has come up with, or the township has come up with, how those funds are going to be spent? Because I know in Innisville, there was a portion that every year went to charitable organizations to support the community, and given the needs in Wasaga, it bothers me that that hasn't been something that I've seen.
Thank you for your question. We do have a casino policy, and the way it was developed is, being new to having a casino in the community, we did some research on how other communities were handling the funds, and we developed the first policy, took it forward to council, making it clear that council, should they choose, can change it at any time. And the policy right now does lay out funding for various opportunities that the funds can be used for. And one of them is to help the community, and the medical facility was considered something that would benefit the community. We also have talked with OLG directly to ensure that there are no requirements from them on how those funds are spent. It is 100% at the discretion of council as to how those funds are used. So that casino policy will probably be coming forward later this year for a review with the current council, because it was the prior council that set that policy, and at that time, we'll review any other opportunities that there are to consider. Thank you.
If I could, yes, and also for the sports and entertainment division, so the opportunity now is to plant that as seed money to help that entertainment division get up and running out of the first gate. So if you think about it in terms of, I guess, no overdraft in your bank account, so as the division starts out, you don't have any revenue coming in, so that seed money will pay for the staff and help us acquire the acts and get things going. And it's just like your normal bank account, as the revenue comes in, you've put that money in the bank, and your overdraft eliminates. Over the course of time, that seed money that's destined to help out the sports and entertainment division will automatically be paid back, will end up making considerably more money than the original startup. So at the end of the day, the financial model probably saw us at the end of year three at about $800,000 to $900,000 surplus that'll help pay down debt and do other things that council would like to do, including the fact that any money that was utilized from the casino funds would actually be repaid as well.
Thank you, ma'am, we'll start to my right.
I don't want to go back and touch the discussion about parking again. I think, personally, I think you should just go back to what we're doing two years ago. I heard it was too much work for people, let's charge and go back to 2,500 a year, and be done with it, anyway. My bigger question is about, I've been watching what's going on with the changes in the short-term accommodation and reviewing the current bylaws around that. We live in an area, we're close by McDonald's, we have a lot of rental properties in the area, we have a lot of Airbnbs in the area that are illegal. Heaven Rattle the Milk's not that bad, but I have also been watching what's going on with Beach Area 1 and the redevelopment. I keep hearing about we're bringing in new units, new accommodation. Beach Area 1 is zone commercial. What are we putting in place to stop it from becoming a ghost hotel, similar to what they have in Toronto with the, because the Ice Hotel complex down in Toronto, it is probably one of the worst places to stay in Toronto as a rental condo. So what we're doing here in Wasaga, prevent getting into a ghost hotel situation in Beach Area 1, are we going to force the builders to put something in, managed, like they have Blue, a very nice system of Blue there, it's all managed, you buy a unit, you're in the, you buy a unit, you're forced to be part of their system. So all the bad apples are kicked out, everything's managed, and they actually put in programs so people are in this, in the area for seasons of the year. Thank you.
Excellent questions, and you're foreshadowing to part of our presentation on June 20th. So as part of our discussions with the hotel developer, we have been talking about that exact point, and...
Sorry, I said accommodation.
Yep.
Because there's going to be a hotel portion?
I know.
And there's probably going to be condos.
I know, so I'm going to answer your question. So what we have talked about with the hotel developer is they are interested in building a standalone hotel, but any residential that gets built at Beach Area 1, they are also very interested in having all of that residential. The owner would have the option of putting that in a rental pool that would be managed by the hotel, that's the identical model that is used at the Village of Blue.
I think that Blue was actually on D, that says you have to be part of it.
Should they wish to go in a rental pool? You are correct, that's what we would want. That's what we would want. We do not want private Airbnb's, so we would want the hotel to be managing it. And that's the proper way to do it. That's been proven in our next-door neighbor. So you're absolutely correct. We're already thinking about that. We've already talked to the developers about that. There's the bigger issue too about short-term accommodation across the entire community. And there's gonna be a report come forward to council within the next few weeks that talks about how we deal with that. We will be looking at bringing in some new programs. One of them is called Granicus. That's a company that actually tracks illegal Airbnb's. And our, my friend to the... Two to the left will be working very closely with that so that we can stay on top of that. Because again, it can be very disruptive and disrespectful to neighbors. So we wanna be very deliberate about where we allow it, where we shouldn't have it. And we're gonna put those tools in place very soon.
Yeah, my question is to whoever can answer it. I live out the west end by the casino and apparently there's been applications submitted for subdivisions out there. One is at the end of Beechwood over to Shore Lane. And apparently that has been designated as a wetland and it's a natural filtration system for the water that runs into Georgian Bay. And from what the plans I've seen, they're planning on developing that property and across the road from Beechwood too. They're gonna put like a hundred, two hundred some odd houses in there. Do you know anything about that or what's going on with that or...
We do. We know quite a bit about it.
Thank you.
And I hate to do this to you, Kevin, but you're probably the most familiar with the drainage approach here. So Kevin can update you a bit on that. But there absolutely has been a development proposed there. That is correct.
And you can't touch it.
Yeah, so Kevin, do you wanna share a little bit?
I can. So again, to my earlier comment, if you're within the regulatory boundary, you require NVCA approval or acceptance. So they're no different and they will have to follow the appropriate steps, prepare the necessary technical documents, environmental studies to support their application. That'll get vetted through not only our staff, our planning staff, our subconsultants, but also the NVCA. So is there a proposal for that area? Yes. But they still have to follow the same planning process that everyone has to and the extent of that development is still to be determined.
Because they tried something like that about three years ago, four years ago. They tried that once before too.
I don't know if... They presented a concept to the public on their own will. It wasn't a planning application, to my knowledge. But it wasn't... It really didn't have any status. I think it was on their own will that they wanted to go and kind of test the neighborhood a little bit. And I think they had some feedback, not all positive, if any positive. But yeah, they'll have to follow the appropriate planning approval process as does everyone within the community. And yeah, the NVCA will have interest in certainly the features on that property as they do with any property.
Because I, like I moved up from Calhoun because Calhoun just getting stupid with the building and everything else and think what's going on here in Wasaga Beach? There's too much building going on, too many subdivisions going on.
One thing I will share with you, I'm gonna put in a bit of a plug for some work we're gonna be doing the second week of June, so the week of June tenth. The entire west end of Wasaga Beach has really never had a proper plan. We've never all got together and said, what's our vision for the west end of Wasaga Beach? So we're actually going to be creating that that week. We're bringing in a team. We're gonna be holding a public process. So all of you, you're gonna be hearing more about it. We want you to be part of it. It's gonna start on the Monday and by Thursday, we will have a plan. So it's gonna move very fast. We want you to come out, be part of that. And that will help us all get to some consensus around what is it we're trying to achieve in the west end of our community.
Because you got a municipal yard going in there too, apparently.
Correct.
Yeah, up there with the plows and all that stuff. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ruth and I live what used to be Wasaga Sands Golf Course. And I just wanna know what's going on. Is this also part of this?
We knew somebody would ask that question. Absolutely. So as you are aware, and our director of planning can provide details, more details if I don't get it all right, there has been a development proposal that has been put forward. I wanna make it very clear, neither staff nor council are offering an opinion either way. We're letting the proposal run its course. I have met personally with the developer and have shared my concerns with the developer. I do have concerns about the density and probably a lot of the concerns that you have. There will be a public meeting. What's the date of the public meeting?
May thirtieth.
May thirtieth?
I know.
Okay, so you're well aware of that. The purpose of that meeting is for all of the residents that have concerns or have views that you wanna share, please come out to council and share those with council, with staff so that we can hear your opinions of the development. We will then take all of that feedback back. Trevor and his team will then write a recommendation report to council and then council will make some decisions around whether or not council believes it's good development, a bad development, somewhere in between. So we absolutely hear all of the concerns that are coming forward. And again, council's listening, staff are listening.
Thank you, Ruth. And I can tell you that my office has received no less than probably fifty to sixty emails from the residents in Twin Creeks. And council members have also received a ton of those emails. Council hears you loud and clear. But there is a process that we have to follow according to the Planning Act and we'll do that. But we encourage you all to come out and to respectfully give us your thoughts and opinions, not only to us but to the developer, so as that council and staff can make an informed report to come back to council, so as that council then can make the tough decisions, whichever way that might be. But again, I wanna reiterate, as the mayor, and I think I can speak for council on this one, we hear you folks loud and clear. I too have a concern with the density there.
Sorry, can I speak on that matter as far as...
Nope. No, I'm kidding. Go ahead.
Just on behalf of Wasaga Sands community, we are hosting another community meeting next Wednesday, twenty-second, at the Clearview Community Church. And I know I haven't asked a few of the council members to come out if we do have any questions, if there are any other members that would like to come out. We would love to see that support as well. Again, as a member of that community, new to that community, and I believe I'm probably the youngest one here. Take it again. But again, on that note, has any further investigation been done on Achilles and accomplished capital as far as the misappropriation of fund citation that has been...
Yes, so we evaluate development proposals based on the merits of the proposal. We hear loud and clear communities' concerns about the developer, what they are proposing. We do not evaluate a proposal based on any lawsuits that may be in play or all of that kind of... Because again, it... We have to base our decisions based on planning principles. We do share your concerns. We are aware of them. We are paying attention. But again, we have to, we have to play by the rules that we are allowed to play by. But we do hear you loud and clear. Yes, sir.
Thank you for all being here tonight. My question is about Nancy Island. And I understand it's responsible of the province. The Friends of Nancy Island have worked incredibly hard to keep it open. I wondered if... I'm sure there must be conversations going on with some hope for the future.
Thank you very much. And it's, I'm glad you bring it up because it's an extremely important part of our heritage and our history here. For those of you who don't know, the War of eighteen twelve and that battle of the Nancy and Ottawa Wasaga River is one of the main, most important reasons why we are a British colony today and not a U.S. colony today. It's an extremely important part of our history. And as the mayor, I don't mind saying publicly, I think it's disgraceful, quite frankly, the way that Nancy Island has been left to deteriorate. I went, I've spent many, many days of my life on that island as a kid. I could recite the theater presentation and I know a lot about the history. So what we've been doing is we've been working with the province and with our local M P P. As a matter of fact, Andrew and staff toured M P P Sanderson through there and he was as, I think, as surprised and maybe appalled as well at the condition. The problem as we see it as the town is that the Nancy Island is in the wrong ministry. The M E C P or what used to be the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry is not all about anything but the environment and making sure environmental rules and regulations are followed. Nancy Island is an historic site and it's a tourist attraction and it should be in the Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Sport. If you look at Saint Maria Among the Hurons, if you look at harbor, Discovery Harbor and Penetang Machine and most of these other sites that have this type of history, they all are in the Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Sport. And why do we want it there? It's because the Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Sport has money to maintain and to look after these important sites. The M E C P does not. We see that throughout our provincial park. We've got six provincial parks. We've got Allenwood Beach. We've got all kinds of areas where, you know, Beach Area One in the seventies, when they expropriated land and they created these parks, they spent millions of dollars in this community to create beautiful parks. And from that day on, they've never spent another nickel. They've just let it deteriorate and it's disgraceful. So we're working with the ministry, we're working with the M P P, and not only to make sure that we get Nancy Island looked after and looked after properly, but that also we try and get them to start picking up the pace and continuing to look after our provincial park better than they do today.
Am I allowed two questions?
You're allowed one.
They're short.
And then we'll see if there's somebody else.
First one is a very hard-hitting question. I've discussed it with council before with the Public Works, Kevin and Brian, you're aware of it. I'd like to talk about gushia. Gushia?
We will allow that vernacular.
So where I live on Wally Drive, we have two ponds in our direct area. And of the point in time right now, we have forty-one geese. All the geese lovers out there, I know you love them. With the shit all over the sidewalk and the road and on your front lawn. It becomes a health hazard. Try anything, right? So I've tried to work with the private entities there, Park Ridge and the retirement home. And to me, it's a very simple solution. Put up a fence around the ponds. Yes, they can fly over them, but the little ones can't. So if the little ones can't, the parents don't wanna be there. Let them go somewhere else than if somebody else is... Is there anything that the director of Public Works could do anything to move this process along? Because I did, I tried to take video, but I missed it. They were chasing us... I could really jazz it up, an old lady in a wheelchair with two canes. I mean, I could make it good. But they chased this lady off the sidewalk. And she wasn't that spry. Nobody in our neighborhood is that spry. So Kevin, is there anything, any suggestion you might have to move this process along?
The short answer is no.
No?
Okay, question number two, if I'm allowed.
If I could, Fred, I'll have a chat with Kevin. Believe it or not, I do have a bit of experience dealing with geese in my former Mississauga life.
No kidding.
Where the waterfront was overrun with geese. And I don't know if I should say out loud what the city did, but there were major transport trucks involved that took the geese out east.
We don't need major transport trucks. Perhaps a trailer or two.
The other trick, I don't know, for those of you who are familiar with Mississauga's waterfront, you'll notice a lot of the waterfront has rocks. And that's very deliberate because the geese don't like that. So you can actually design ponds and water fronts to be in such a way that they actually will avoid it. So I'll have a chat with Kevin. We'll come out, we'll meet with you, we'll walk the site with you. And again, Kevin may not like me saying this, but we'll see if we can find a solution.
That'd be great.
But we made no promises.
Two, another question?
Seeing no one else in line and as long as this question has no vernaculars, absolutely.
Yeah, not... So the new high school. I'd just like some clarification. Who can go there? How do you apply? What are the consequences of having kindergartens, junior kindergarten, whatever it is, to grade twelve, how that's gonna work? And also the land. Who's giving up the land? I've heard different stories as recently as last Tuesday about whose land it is. And I'd... Can we get some clarification on that? Is there any cost to it? Benefits, no benefits? Thank you very much.
Well, to start, it's not my land. And it's not my wife's land. Thank you, Fred, for the question. I think it's a good opportunity to give a little bit of history from beginning to end. When the town decided to attempt to implement a high school into the hub and connect it and join it with the twin patrolling and library, we reached out at the exact same time, on the same day, to both boards. And we made our pitch to both boards to come and speak to us so as that we could speak to them about the possibility of a high school connected to the T-PAL. We did not hear back from the public board for, I believe, a couple of weeks. But the Catholic Board, we heard back from immediately and within a few days, they were on-site. And it's important for you to know that so as that you understand that there is no favoritism paid here to either the public or the Catholic Board. The Catholic Board simply acted. And then we went to the A M O conference, sorry, the Roma Conference in Toronto. And we met with the Ministry of Education and we met with the parliamentary assistant. And the parliamentary assistant was very clear with council and staff what it is that we should do in order to get a high school on a priority list and before the ministry so as that they could approve us. And what they were looking for specifically, we took everything they told us, we went back to the town and we implemented and did everything they said we should do to be successful. We reached out to Canador College, we reached out to Georgian College, we reached out to Lakehead University, and we reached out to the county of Simcoe. And we formed relationships and partnerships for the high school. And then we sat back down with the Catholic Board because they are the board that came to the table. And we formed a plan and then went back before the ministry and presented our plan. And I'm happy and proud to say that at that meeting when we presented the plan, when the meeting was over and we were about to leave, the deputy minister of education, first of all, when we went there, we didn't just go with council and staff. We took with us the landowner, the developer who owns the land. We took with us representatives from the county and anyone else that would come with us. As a matter of fact, when we got there and sat down, Minister Lache looked at us at the table. It was a table about this long and we had this many or more people. And his words to me were, "Mr. Mayor, there's a lot of people here in the room and I want you to know I'm not intimidated." And my response to him was, "If you just give me a minute, Mr. Minister, I can make a call, we can bring more people." But we had a great discussion. And when we were finished, right before we left, the deputy minister stood up and she said, "Yourship, I want you to understand something." She said, "I've been doing this for over twenty years and I have seen, we have seen hundreds of these presentations. And you need to know that your C A O has just given us the best presentation that we have ever seen." I tell you this story, ladies and gentlemen, because it's important to understand that he... history. And it's important to understand that the team that we have compiled and put together that is sitting at this table today, I am happy to say, I believe, is absolutely second and of in any municipality in this province. Their heart is in the right place, they care, and they're dedicated. They're dedicated to you, and they're dedicated to our children, and they're dedicated to moving this community forward in a positive, sustainable, affordable manner. So back to your question, who owns the land? The land is owned by a private developer, and that private developer will be selling that land to the Board of Education, which will be funded by the ministry, not by the town of Wasaga Beach. No cost in this school, with the exception of some seating and some audio visual equipment for the 300-seat theater that will be available in evenings and weekends to the municipality to use as a cultural center and theater is all we will be paying for. The rest will be 100% funded, $57.7 million, by the Ministry of Education. And Minister Lachey, Minister Lachey was here last week, and he indicated that they were happy to do so. It had been the largest commitment they had made for a school, and it's here in Wasaga Beach. So we have a $60 million TPAL, and through the hard work of the people at this table and your council, we've built relationships, and we've now received funding from the ministry for $57.7 million. That's going to give us a high, a school that is from JK to grade 12. And I've heard from a few people that there's some concern in mixing the younger grades with the upper grades. And what I would say is that the Simcoe County District Mascoka School Board, the Catholic School Board, are the experts in this field. And I am very confident they have done their homework. This is not a first, and that they know and believe that this will work, and it works well. I could tell you that my daughters went to a Catholic high school that was from grades seven to 12. And there was concerns then, that we had grades six and sevens and eights, sorry, mixed with high school students. But their recesses were at different times, their lunches are at different times, and it's worked out so as that we keep, or they keep, the kids separate where need be and how it's done. And they do a very good job at it. My daughters were fortunate to have a great education in that same type of system. The reason it's JK to 12 is because the Catholic School Board understands that currently they are over capacity in their current elementary school, St. Noel Charbonneau. And so they need more capacity. There is a site out in the Elm Developments, which is the townhouses and condos you see on the other side of the hill by the arena going out of town. There is a site there that is also scheduled for a future elementary school, a Catholic elementary school. And so as the Catholic Board grows the student population in the high school level, and as more students come at the elementary level, what they believe will happen is that the elementary school will go down, and there'll be more high school students at the new school, and then they'll apply for another elementary school out in the Elm Development. So eventually, it will probably be a seven to 12, as opposed to a JK to 12, or maybe even a nine to 12. But those, that's up to the experts in the education field. And the Catholic School Board, just like the public school board, these are the folks that know how to design these schools and what to do. So I'm going to pass it over to Andrew to add to that. But at the end of the day, we're very proud that we're able to get our children their first high school. We've heard the comments about why a Catholic school and not a public school. The answer to that is very simple. The Catholic Board came to the table very quickly, they responded, they worked with us to get it done. The public board has been very, very clear that they believe 2030 is the year for a high school, a public high school in Wasaga Beach. We had discussions at council today where we will be looking and reaching out to the public board very soon to let them know that we are absolutely prepared, willing, and excited to work with them to try and move the public high school up on their priority list. Currently, they had us this year at number 12 out of 10, basically. And what we know is that if you're not number one, two, and three on the board's capital priority plan, you're not getting a school. We need to work with that board to move the Wasaga Beach Public High School up to location one, two, or three. Council and staff are here, ready, willing, and able to do whatever it takes to work with the public board to make that happen. And the great news is, the worst-case scenario, by 2030, 2031, our kids are now going to have two high schools, and a few months ago, they had none.
I'll keep my additions quick, because that was a very fulsome response. The one correction I would make, the school board will be buying six acres of land from the private developer. The whole school's approximately 12 acres. The remainder of the land is being donated by the developer to the town and to the school board to complete the whole school. So we have an amazing partnership. We have a developer who has truly come to the table and worked with us to make this a reality. I can't emphasize enough how important the cultural side is as well. To build, and we heard this loud and clear from the community for years, the community would like to see a cultural center with a theater. We are now getting a cultural center that will include a theater, performance art space, dance space, studio space. If we were to build that on our own, you're probably looking at a $25 million complex. We're getting it for free. All we need to do is pay the upgrades for some good quality seats and a sound system. That's a pretty good deal, and we'll have that by 2027. And I see Kurt in the back. I think we would, I don't want to speak for council, but having you being the first person on that stage, I think this community would really welcome.
If I could, maybe just follow up into high school, just for a quick, a quick question. So the other part is, the high school is full STEM capable. So science, technology, engineering, and math, it's all part of it. It's not deficient in any way, shape, or form.
So we have two more speakers up in line, and then we will have the mayor give closing remarks. And I'll remind everyone here, please visit the town's website for any information. You can subscribe to receive notifications, and administration's always there, ready to assist you as well. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. As Brian well knows, I've been a teacher in this area for 35 years, and I'm very proud of some of my former students. You're looking at it. And over the past number of years, I guess, so due councils previous, we started looking to the board to get a high school here. And we went to many presentations. And it wasn't terribly successful. I really admire your fortitude. These guys hung in, they never gave up. They just never gave up. And as a result, I think we're going to have an amazing development, which will incorporate, I guess, the phys ed program, you'll have theater, they've got that wonderful library right there. It's just wonderful to think what's going to happen down the road. And we have, I have nine grandchildren. They follow many different faiths. One of them is doing extremely well. She attended St. Noel and went to St. Mary's and never took the religious courses, but really benefited from all of the academics as well. So I don't worry about that part of it. I've had several people, because they know my background, what do I think of having a Catholic high school? I think it's wonderful, because we're going to plant a seed, which we tried to water many times, didn't we, Brian? And finally, it's flourishing. And I'd just like to give you all a great big round of applause for what you've done. It's great.
The, we actually, I just remembered, Fred, we didn't answer one part of your question, and that was who can attend. And I'll share a personal note first. I am not Catholic. My wife told me that our kids are going to Catholic school, so they go to Catholic school. So Catholic schools are open access. So the high school component specifically, anybody can attend. We absolutely will work as hard as we can to also bring a public high school to town as quickly as possible. But in the interim, while we're waiting for that to open, should students choose not to ride the bus to Collingwood Stainer, Elmville, they can go to the Catholic school, should they choose to do so. So it is open access.
Hi, my name is Valerie Smith. I am a resident at Wasaga Beach. I have a request. I am an avid cyclist, cycled here to save a little fuel and maybe do something healthy for the environment. There's a bit of a glaring hole in Wasaga Beach in terms of cycling access west to east. And the hole is about a 2.5-kilometer strip between 45th and the bridge at McDonald's. I know there are other cycling paths and that sort of thing. They range from gravel to paved, not conducive to commuting cycling. They're more recreational than nature. My request is, you know, best practice tells us that cycling paths are best when they're on one side of the road, a two-way path, physically separated from traffic with a sidewalk beside. That would be a pipe dream. However, painted green chevrons on that 2.5-kilometer strip on the existing roadway would give both motorists and cyclists a visible way of knowing how to equitably share the road and how to safely share the road. It wouldn't be costly, near as costly as the other alternative. It would create safety. I'm looking around. I know there are avid cyclists in the crowd. Many of them probably have turned to electric motor bicycles. It would give safe access to all ages. It would help our schools with safe travel to school. Not a huge expense would be really appreciated.
Absolutely agreed. And Kevin, he'll look into that. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the staff here at the town and on behalf of council, we want to thank you all for taking the time tonight to come out. We're going to do these more often, and we invite you to bring friends. And as we said when we started, any question is a question we're more than prepared to take and answer. And we want to thank you again for taking time to be committed to your community and being here tonight. Thank you very much.